I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 12, 2022. The time being 6:30 p.m. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please use electronic devices to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The city requests that participants complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table in the back of the room. Jamie Kane is joining via Zoom, so we will do roll call votes for each item. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Darrell Poling.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Rick Gansweller.
Here.
Vienna McKenzie.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from March 8, 2022, any edits, additions, or corrections. If not, would entertain a motion to approve those as presented?
Second.
Motion's been made by Darrell, second by Vienna. Amy?
Jamie?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Vienna?
Yes.
Under New Business, Clerk Treasurer Amy Borns has Ordinance 2022-05, the additional appropriation on behalf of the Greensburg Community Schools.
This was for a pond, I believe, and I thought Tom was going to be here this evening. But I know that he has his.
Well, this board meeting starts at two. Anything, second reading, and it's their appropriation from their money?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Rick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vienna. Amy?
Jamie?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vienna?
Under New Business, we have Philip Roth, American Treasurer Point for our Comprehensive Plan update. Good evening, Philip. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I'll make this brief because I know you've got a full agenda tonight, but we just wanted to update you that there are going to be some public outreach events coming up over the next few weeks, particularly some public meetings next month. Just to remind you, the comprehensive plan process has been underway for nearly a year. Comprehensive Plan is the roadmap for the city's land use and development, and we have been trying to put together a plan that involves a lot of input from the community. You may recall that we were very active last summer trying to get public input during things like the Tree City Festival and doing some other things like surveys and being at other community events. And now we're at the point where we're trying to get implementation ideas and trying to have some concrete action steps moving forward. So we're in the home stretch, I think, is the overall message of the planning process, at least for the comprehensive plan. There's a parallel effort on the Unified Development Ordinance that is underway. It is now in full swing, I guess. So I'll go over that in a moment. But we're going to have a variety of things to show the public, including what the future land use form of the city should look like, what we would like to have happen in various key corridors and locations within the community, and asking the community their input about how they feel versus different types of community character at different locations. The Unified Development Ordinance is a little bit more technical. That's just simply updating the city's zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance in a manner where they're a consolidated, single document. That's not necessarily part of the public input that we're going to be getting next week, although we will be having some information available for interested people. However, I did want to let you know that that is something that is currently underway. So to kind of give you a sense of the overall schedule, we have launched a survey. It is live, and it is, you can get the link either from the city's website or the Comprehensive Plan website, which is growinggreensburg.com. We're here tonight just giving you an overall meeting, but then we're going to have an update. But then next week, we're going to have a couple of workshops here in the city hall. Now, the mayor reminded me when I was talking to students yesterday that just because it says noon to eight, that doesn't mean that you're expected to come from noon to eight. It's an open workshop. You can come as long as you want. We're going to have stations available around the room. I know you can't read that, but the idea is that you would be able to gravitate to topics of interest and be able to spend time giving your input on various activities or various topics. We'll have some activities for children to do, so people can bring their children if they aren't able to fund childcare. And then also have information on what kinds of things are going to be happening next with the comprehensive plan. That's really about it. We will have also, by the way, a virtual public meeting room. So in addition to the physical presence that we have here, we will have a live version where somebody can get on the website and kind of go around a room in a similar fashion and look at various topics around the room and give their input that way as well. So that's it. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them now or you can get ahold of me later. I've been working very closely with Sarah and with Mayor, so they know how to get ahold of me if you have any questions after the meeting. Otherwise, I really do hope that you'll let people know about the public meetings, the public workshops next week, and feel free to please come yourselves. It's an important process for the city's future growth and developments, and we need all the input that we can get. Do you have any questions tonight?
Philip, I think it's probably important, too, to emphasize that the items shown are final. Everything is still up for discussion, and this has really just been what's being discussed and how do we formulate that going forward?
When we talk about having the public input, we're having a, we're actually giving them a range of choices to get some reactions from them. And of course, they can propose new things themselves. So yes, you're absolutely right. This is not intended to be final, but rather to get reactions from the public on various developing concepts for the community.
There's also been a Comprehensive Plan Committee Task Force that's been operating in the background for months.
Yes.
And then we also had some public input sessions at the St. Mary's Hall Festival and Homecoming and some other.
Last summer was particularly heavy time. Last summer, early fall, was particularly heavy for public input in that first phase. Yes.
Other questions for Philip? Okay. Thank you. That was painless enough. Thank you.
I was told I have all the time I wanted, so.
I think we said 10 minutes. Good try, though.
Thank you.
Thanks, Philip. Up next, we have Jerry from Reedy Financial, who's going to go through a couple different things with us. First of all, oh, thank you. Brooke, here. So whoever would like to start the first item on the agenda is the Redevelopment Commission's annual report, which I said I was going to pass out. I didn't.
And that's just for the Redevelopment Commission. By statute, that's reporting requirements, that you guys have to receive this. So really, it's just simply acknowledging during this meeting that you have received that in order to meet that reporting requirement.
And the second, yeah, that's the copy of the report that, like Jerry said, you have to legally receive, which you received a copy in your folder, too. We just added it yesterday morning, so I want to be sure you had a copy. The second item on the agenda is Ordinance 2022-07, which is the establishment, the reestablishment of the Cumulative Capital Development Fund.
Yes, that's an important note, the reestablishment, which this, just a quick, I guess, education on, in case anybody isn't aware, the CCD Fund, the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, it is rate-driven, meaning it's a calculation where it's based off your most recent assessed value. If that grows more than your three-year average, then that rate will actually decrease over time. So you guys have been increasing. I believe maybe 2015 was the last year, was at a full five cents. That's the max. Now currently, in 2022, it is at, five cents is the max, it's at 4.43 cents. So it has gradually decreased over the years. As the mayor mentioned, this would be a reestablishment because back in 2015, it was at five cents. Now, this ordinance, this would just be the first reading. If you guys decide to move forward with it, there is another meeting. Do they have the timeline, by chance?
Yes, that's in your folders.
So the timeline, if you look at that, you can see the first bullet point there. That's the meeting today. If you guys are good to move forward with it, it actually has to be advertised two different times in both the newspapers that circulate within the city. So you can see those are the next four bullet points there. It has to be published at least 10 days and then at least three days. Those have to be a week apart. That's prior to the public hearing. Then you guys would have the public hearing at that point in time, which we're showing for May 6th. At that time, or excuse me, May 10th would be the public hearing and the second reading slash adoption. From there, there are, on top of this process, there's more documents that have to be sent out. The DLGF, the Department of Local Government Finance, they have templates that need to be filled out. So that's something that Amy's office would be putting together. We can assist where needed. But if it is adopted at that point in time, then you have to actually send another notice that it's being adopted. Once that is adopted, it starts the 30-day remonstrance period, and after that 30 days are up, then you actually have to get a certificate of no remonstrance from the auditor's office and send all this information in. So this just kind of starts the process. It's simply the first reading, and if everything is good and you guys are good with it, then we would actually send the notice to the taxpayers for the public hearing coming up. Any specific questions on the CCD Fund reestablishment?
We do use the fund for capital improvement projects throughout the city. Pirate Park is being funded by that in portion. There are other quality-of-life projects, if you will, that typically are funded out of that. It doesn't have a standing operating. There's no salaries. There's no professional services, really, that, there's nothing budgeted. It goes towards improvements in the community. Any questions for Jerry on that? If not, would take a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-07 on first reading.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Darrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. Amy?
Jamie?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vienna?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda for Jerry is ARAP reporting deadline.
Yes, so that's the American Rescue Plan Act. The final rule became effective April 1st. Early on, one of the uses that you could, that would qualify would be revenue replacement. Early on, it was a calculation. They came back, US Treasury, and put out a $10 million standard allowance, which is well above the total that you guys are going to be receiving once you get your second tranche here soon. Now, I would highly recommend, if you guys have specific plans, you can still spend them, even if it would have went under a different category, but I'd highly recommend to approve that would fall under that $10 million standard allowance, simply because the US Treasury even has a PowerPoint out about this as far as the reporting requirements. It's going to be a lot less of a headache on Amy if you would elect to spend it through that $10 million threshold. Even, you can still use it on the other stuff, but really approving stateboard accounts once at least acknowledged during meeting minutes. And then during the reporting, which is April 30th, Amy will actually have to click in there whether or not she, the city went with the $10 million. So really, it's, doesn't change how you want to spend, it just makes things a lot easier reporting-wise.
And this was something, April 1, the final rules were put out, and it has to be agreed to by April 30.
Yeah.
So I know that there wasn't something in your packet. Kevin, you may have printed the agenda earlier, so that was an add-on from late last night. I apologize. I should have gotten you a new copy. Jerry, the point that they need to vote on is simply a reporting. It's not an approval to spend any money or move any money, just that we're going to report it this way?
Yes, just reporting it that way. Yeah.
And by it being reflected in the minutes as we agree to report it that way, that's all that needs to be done?
Simply, yeah, reporting it. Don't think that if you had plans over here that it's going to be under this category that you still couldn't do it, because really, that standard allowance, that revenue replacement, opens up even more opportunities to spending on other things. So if you would change your mind down the road on, from your current plans, this is, becomes a little bit more flexible, too. But the main thing is the reporting is so much easier.
We have a new tranche coming, so that's the other thing to keep in mind, is we have more money coming and we can still spend it under the new, this new rule.
Any questions for Jerry on that? Jerry, make sure I get this motion right. I would entertain a motion to approve the standard deduction of $10 million for the ARPA money.
Yeah, standard allowance.
Standard allowance going forward.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Jamie, you okay on that?
Yes.
Okay. Amy?
Jamie?
Yes.
Sorry, he called it before I did. Darrell?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vienna?
Yes.
Fourth and final thing, which I think is also Brooke's involvement, too, is the discussion of the 2021 end-of-year report.
Yes. So, yeah, we wanted to come, just a quick recap on how 2021 ended, some of the particular discussion items. We wanted to start off with the audit findings related to the city investments. I think it's very important to have a good understanding of what that looks like prior to seeing some of these other cash reports that we're showing. So we'll start off with that, then we'll lead into really the meat and potatoes of this, which is the 2021 year-end summary. It really shows every particular major operating fund for you guys. And then we have a couple, couple other interesting things to show you as far as unused appropriations and the cash reserves. And even though this is a focus on 2021 year-end, we wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update as far as what 2022 is projected to look like. Brooke, she was heavily involved in this project as far as the city investments go, so I'm going to let her explain that.
I'm loud enough. So on the 2020 actual, what you're seeing here is after the audit. So it's just important to note, in 2019, you had CDs that retired and were moved to a money market account, and Keystone just recognizes money market accounts a little bit differently. So there were just some bookkeeping records that inflated the general cash fund that we discovered and were corrected in 2021. So 2020 appears as if it's the general fund surplus 3.7 million. We turned around and corrected that in 2021, correcting the beginning fund balances and corrected the 2020 annual financial report. So then in 2021, it looks as if there were a deficit on the book, but there was not actually a deficit in spending. It was just correcting those funds and where things were hitting in the software. So the general fund still surplus about 1.1 million between 2020 and 2021. That's just important to note. It did still surplus books side, 2021 looks like it had a deficit spending, but it was just simply correcting where things were hitting as far as those investments that went over to that money market account. Since then, money market account has been closed. All money is back into one account. We will look into the future. We've discussed about investment accounts because that is a good approach, but we just wanted to get through a couple of things first. But it still surplus 1.1 million, but as Jerry said, to get into 2021, it is important to note that the corrections from 2020 are on 2021 books. So your expenses appear to be 11 million, but that's just correcting from 2020. So overall, the general fund did still surplus the 1.1 million. And everything's been corrected since, and we are good moving forward. So are there any specific questions on that?
Then we're good with the stateboard accounts?
Yeah.
Everything's okay?
Yeah. Yeah, we worked with the stateboard accounts, auditors there on site, and Amy.
I had a whole office full, yeah, between the audit and Reedy being in there and working together, but yeah, it's.
So we're all good now and everything's corrected, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we have a good comparison here in the next few slides that shows the general fund and netting out these investments in what 2021 would have looked like without all of this stuff going on. So now we'll get into the way 2021 ended. This first couple of slides here is what we call just the 2021 year-end summary. I'm sure you guys have received probably that big old binder that we hand out that shows all these funds. So this is really a 30,000-foot look at things. So we've got the funds going across the top, and we've got another set on the next slide. This is your main operating funds. But working our way from top to bottom there, we show the January 1st cash balance, total revenues, total expenditures. And a line I like to really focus on is the revenues over under expenditures. So how much did cash grow or decrease during that particular year to get to the current fund balance? And then another thing we like to show below that is the certified budget and then the total spending authority. So throughout the year, you may have additional appropriations that add to that total spending authority. And then we track unused appropriations, a very important management tool throughout the year. You guys hit almost 10% of your budget for general fund, which is great. And then we show the number of days in cash reserve and the percent cash reserve. That calculation is actually your ending cash divided by your total spending. That gets you to that 46%, and then you take that times 365 days to get to your number of days. Essentially, what that is stating is if you didn't receive one more dollar of revenue, how many days could you operate before you would shut down? Now, I did note in here that the spending, the $11 million is inflated, particularly from the investment and those adjustments, and roughly $3 million of expenditures in there that really weren't 2021 expenditures. So it actually decreases that, but we'll show a different comparison of the general fund to show really what that true number of days in cash reserves would be. Working your way across there, you can see that the majority of the funds increased in cash. Lit Public Safety, there was an additional appropriation. There was some fire equipment that was approved and spent out of, so that did bring cash down a little bit. But you can see for that particular fund, 266 days in cash reserves, and that's even with more spending than typical because of that fire equipment. So overall, you know, these funds are definitely looking very good, healthy cash reserves. This next page here, we just show some more funds as far as the ones that we track in here. Once again, you can see the revenue over under expenditures. In the majority of these funds grew in cash again, and then at the bottom, you can see the number of days in cash reserves and very healthy cash reserves as well for all of these funds. Any questions on any of these particular funds before I show the comparison for general So here is the general fund 2021 year-end summary net of the investments that Brooke discussed. So on the previous couple of slides, you saw the general fund. So that left column there is what you saw previously that includes the investments. Hypothetically, say we take all of those out, what would the general fund look like? So we backed that stuff out, and we kind of had to back into the cash balance. But if you took all of that out, revenues over expenditures for the general fund would have actually increased by just over 900,000. And even more importantly, you can see down below, as far as the number of days in cash reserves, how much that drastically goes up because the calculation is dependent on expenditures. So if you have some one-time expenditures or unappropriated, it may mess with that calculation. So we netted those out. More realistic number of days in cash reserves, 245, which is great. Best practice internally that we do at Reedy Financial Group for general fund or really the main property tax funds is a 50% cash reserve. We have some clients that elect a little bit lower than that, but with general fund as main source of funding, the property taxes coming in every six months, yes, you're going to get some income tax and some other miscellaneous revenues, but really, if you can maintain a 50% cash reserve, that'd be great, and you guys are over that. Any questions on this particular slide? Unused appropriations, which we saw that previously. This is just showing more historical years. You can see all the funds listed there. The one that I want to point out is the general fund. You can see in 2018, 2.1%, and then 8.1%, 5.3%, and then 9.9% was 10% in 2021. So this is the percent of your budget that you actually don't spend. Now, during the budget for 2021 and also for 2022, in building that out, we were projecting out a 5% unused appropriations. As you can see, in 2021, you guys almost doubled that, which is great. I mean, that just shows how much the apartment heads, Amy's office, the mayor's, you know, everybody collectively in the city has been able to manage their budgets throughout the year to hit that. Now, 2022, and we'll show more projections for it. We're showing the 5% again, and I think it's important to show that even hitting 1% above what you're betting or what you might build your balance, equates to another 86,000, and I think that was a big contributor for 2021 net of investments as far as what the general fund would have grown that particular year. Any questions there? Okay. So here we have cash reserves, which is why it's very important to discuss the investments because it is shown in here. Now, we group these up based off of fund categories. I'll give you an idea of what falls in the major operating funds, which the general fund falls under that. Major operating is general fund, MBH, LRS, lit public safety, and we actually have Honda under there as well. But you can see the fluctuation from 2019 actual, the 6.8 million that's highlighted down below, and how it grows. Well, a big reason, as you saw, the roughly $3.7 million in general fund. Then it decreases, but really, to show an accurate picture of what is going on there, it's important to look at 2019 to 2021, and you can see that your major operating funds grew from 6.8 to 8.8 million, almost $2 million. So we show cash there, and we show the days of weighted days of cash on hand. Now, moving into the future, which will show some more projections for 2022, you can see that is dipping down a little bit. As discussed during the budget last year, there are some one-time expenditures that are being spent this year, planned to be spent this year, that are driving that cash down a little bit, but you can see moving forward, the projections are recouping that Overall, I'm in great cash position. We wanted to add this in here before we show projections for 2022. We did not factor in supplemental lit during the budget. What this is, is the state keeps its reserves for Decatur County, and after distributions are certified, all of that, that excess reserve, over 15%, is then distributed out to all the units. I believe it's, they're supposed to send it out by May 1st to the county, and then the county to units by June 1st. Good news for you guys is we're expecting, based off of the reserve amount that they've sent out, that you guys will be receiving additional income taxes for the various different types. Just a comparison to 2021, you did receive this in '21. For certified shares, approximately 137,000, so we're projecting a little bit more. And then for lit ED and lit public safety, it was approximately 32,000 for each one of those. So it just shows that your guys' reserve for Decatur County are in really good shape, and you guys, this is great because it wasn't planned revenue, so it definitely helps out with things.
Jerry, can you expound upon that a little bit about why we don't plan on it?
Yes. I would never recommend planning on this because you never really know if, I mean, because yes, you get the certified distributions. Those are certified towards the end of the budget season. It'd be nice if they were a little bit earlier so we knew for sure what those were going to be, but those are, I guarantee you, once those are certified, you guys are receiving these. This stuff, it's timing as far as the state reconciling and auditing their reserves, so you really don't know until after the budget season. So I mean, obviously, we would always recommend being conservative in any situation. So, I mean, obviously, we would always recommend being conservative in any situation here, which is what you guys did. And then this has actually helped out tremendously with the general fund because I know previously, there was some capital being spent out of there and it was a slight projected deficit, but this actually bumps it up and there's now a projected surplus in the general fund. Any other questions? So here's the projected 2022 surplus slash deficit. If you recall during the budget season, we had this put together. We've got the major operating funds there listed on the left. And then moving across the top, we've got projected revenue for the current year, the actual budget, and then we do factor in the unused appropriations, as I mentioned, for the general fund, 5%. So that is planned to not be spent. Based off of that, the 2022 surplus deficit, there's a surplus of a little over 33,000 for the general fund. As I mentioned, you know, when the budget was approved last year, there was actually a deficit of approximately like 130,000. Now, it was planned, it was one-time expenditures, and you guys have very healthy cash reserves. That's why you build up so that you can do those types of things. But now, because of that, I mean, there's actually a projected surplus, which is really nice moving forward. Just to recap last year, kind of a refresher. Some of these red highlights that you see in here, this is all stuff that was planned, spend downs during the budget. MBH, there are some capital that's being spent out of there, part of the building relocation. CCMG, also paving is a big thing there, anytime that you can get, you know, grant matches. So Streets is definitely taking advantage of that. Even with this deficit in here, they're well over a 100% cash reserve. So that's good use of that money right there as far as, you know, taking advantage of the community crossings, matching grant. Working my way down, CCD, there's a deficit of 60,000. I know I went over it quickly earlier, but if you looked at the 2021 year in summary, the CCD fund actually surplus last year. There was some spending that didn't occur, surplus by over 500,000. We knew that going into this year, that it was going to be a slight spend down, but you can see healthy cash reserves there. Debt sinking, that's where your debt obligations are being paid from. That's kind of, the state's going to allow you to levy what you can to cover those payments. And then the last one I'll couple together is Kuhn Fire and Honda. Million-dollar fire apparatus being spent out of that cash, which is planned spend down as well. So even after some of these planned spend downs, you can see that the overall cash balance of almost $14 million for these particular funds, I mean, you're close to an entire year's cash reserves, which is great. Any specific questions on any of these funds on this slide? I think that might be it, too. I know that was a lot. If you have any questions on any of the previous slides, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those.
Any questions? Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Brooke, Jerry, thank you very much for the help and putting it in a digestible fashion. And as always, we work very well together, so we'll get ready for budget season before too long.
Yeah.
So thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, appreciate it, thank you very much. Up next, Tanya Downey, Executive Director of Main Street Greensburg with her annual report. Good evening, Tanya.
Good evening, I have a paper copy, technical difficulties.
She hit.
Good evening. Well, I'm Tanya Downey, I'm the Main Street Executive Director. And Main Street Greensburg, our organization is tasked with supporting and promoting the historic downtown district. Our organization is driven by the Main Street four-point approach, organization, promotion, design, and economic restructuring. All the reports that we're reading and receiving from the National Main Street Organization and the Small Business Administration are showing indicators that now is a great time to start a business, especially in the downtown. So our Main Street organization works with merchants, property and business owners, homeowners in the city to bring people together to make the downtown area a true asset to Decatur County. So the state of downtown, at the end of 2021, we saw 13 new businesses come in. And we actually have four as of today in 2022, which is exciting. We had five business expansions, four business closings, and 25 facade improvements. And I'll expand on that in just a moment. At the beginning of, at the end of 2020, planning for 2021, it was a challenge not knowing how to plan for events after a pandemic. Blood restrictions we would have, are we limited to events, you know, gathering, things like that? So we were unable to have our fundraisers, but we focused on cleaning up the downtown. I was able to collaborate with Sarah Hamer in the building office, along with Sean Green, to put a presentation together for our merchants about the importance of a facade update or your first impression. And from that presentation with the merchants, we saw six projects come to life and they were completed in 2021. So out of those 25 projects, if you've been downtown, we had the Nicole Ponsler mural, which is right on the site of Tarua. We had, our downtown district saw private investment totaling over $629,500. And this was information that was reported to us. Upgrades were made to preserve and restore the buildings downtown. This was HVAC, new electrical wiring, lighting fixtures, facade repair. There was some sewage repair, window replacement, and plaster. On the promotions side, we had the Ohio Rail Experience. They brought over 500 visitors to Greensburg's downtown area in 2021. The springtime train ride was a lot of fun. We had trolleys, we were tour guides, the whole community came together to welcome our out-of-town visitors. And they are coming back again in 2022, so we're really excited about that. In addition to promotions, we had the farmer's market, which was very successful. We were able to coordinate with Great Plains, formerly...
ETC.
ETC, thank you. And they brought free Wi-Fi to downtown. This made processing like the SNAP cards and WIC cards so much more efficient. And as a result, we had an increase in families using their SNAP and WIC benefits. So we had over $2,139 in SNAP and WIC match and 730 kid coupons redeemed, which is $730. So kids would come to the farmer's market, they get a coupon, and they're going to spend it up the market. As far as economic vitality, we revamped our microloan program. We currently have two businesses taking advantage of that program. This is a low-interest revolving loan program. And it's developed to encourage and aid rehabilitation and renovation of a historic or underutilized building. So if you've seen the Tree City Brewery and Baker Design Ware, those are our two businesses that have taken advantage of that, and they look fantastic. So that leads us to some of the other things that we've been able to do this year, or excuse me, in 2021. We added our wayfinding signs. Parking is the biggest complaint that I get as the director. And although I couldn't fix those problems, we were able to put some signs up to show people where they could park. And I think it's going a little bit better. Working with the business owners has been one of my main goals. Fostering that relationship, listening to their concerns, and trying to find a compromise or a solution. Now, I can't fix all the problems, the pigeons will still be there. But we are able to, for a prime example, is the farmer's market. It was always on Main Street. That was one of the biggest complaints that I received when I became director. When we moved it down to Franklin, and now it's on the corner of Franklin and Main, we have more vendors, we have less complaints, and more visitors to the farmer's market. So very excited about that. We ended the year with the holiday walk. Big thank you to the Greensburg Fire Department, they helped us put up the big Christmas tree. We were able to purchase some new Christmas lights, and it looked beautiful downtown. The downtown holiday walk was a huge success. We had over 1,000 kids come and see Santa. And it's one of our events that is completely free to the public, and we are so proud of that because we, with community sponsorships and contributions, we're able to give a Christmas experience to a child or a family that may not be able to leave town or go see Santa. So it's something that I'm very proud of. So the ambassador program, something that's true and dear to my heart. It provides opportunities for local students to gain real-life experience while giving back to the community. I work with Greensburg High School and North Decatur, starting that relationship with South Decatur. So GTV, they had a media project, they created free commercials for some of our business owners. And those have been streamed on their channel at Greensburg High School. We also had the landscaping class come, and they have winterized our flower beds completely free. Free help, that's great. And they're actually working on a bicentennial project right now in the flower beds. So these kids love working, being a part of something. And giving them that opportunity is something that is very important to me. We ended the year with a historic walking tour project with Greensburg High School. We brought in about 75 students to City Hall, gave them a tour of the brand-new facility and talked to them about, you know, the city of Greensburg and all the organizations that we have and all the ways they can get involved. And from that, they went out and picked one of their favorite landmarks in Greensburg and created a walking tour that we picked a winner, and that will be advertised on our website as well as visit Greensburg. So thanks to the strength and resilience of our existing businesses, people want to do business here. We are grateful for the support of the community and from the city, from the council, from Mayor Marsh. I'm excited about the momentum that I see downtown, and we're really excited for 2022. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Tanya? We're already off to a good start. We've had a couple industries in town, OSL in particular, that reached out to us during their shutdown, production shutdown. So they sent some employees over to do volunteer hours. And Tanya took a crew and Mark's crew delivered mulch. And so if you've been downtown, you've noticed it's already been re-mulched for the year. The beds have been cleaned out, and Tanya spearheaded that for us downtown. So we're already off to a good start this year.
We are. We have a great group of volunteers. We have 21 organizations, local organizations, that are consistent volunteers with Main Street Greensburg. And that's fantastic, so.
I'll just make a comment, you set the bar off a high for 2022. She excited to see what's gonna happen.
She can do it.
I know she can do it. I know that girl.
Any other, any questions? Jamie?
No, I just, great job.
Perfect, we'll keep it up, thank you, and look forward to working with you this year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Chief Stermer, the conversation that we had from the Board Works about the fire station project. Or whichever order you want to do them in.
That's fine. Good evening. So again, we, at the Board of Works tonight, I seeked permission to enter into a contract with DLZ of Indiana to be our architect and design firm for the fire station project, pending the approval of, basically the approval and product or project authorization of expenditures. We have Stephen Kromkowski from DLZ with us here tonight, who can probably answer some other questions as well. In a brief talking with him, I think what I'm going to ask for is that if you guys are willing to authorize expenditures with the limits being set by Rick and Kevin, who are on the task force committee, I don't want to say not to exceed $100,000. I don't want to say not to exceed $50,000 because we just don't know. There is a conversation that will need to be had here in the near future of how much money that we have through our, yeah, bond, current bond, that we set aside for this. We did set aside some money for that, for this purpose, and we're probably going to need to tap into a little bit of that to get the ball rolling as far as design goes. What those numbers exactly are going to look like, we'll have to get with REIT Financial and things like that. The reason I ask for their approval to authorize that is from your board is just to keep the project moving along and not having to hold it off another potential month, if we can get started before then.
I think it's important that we know what those figures are going to be. And so I think maybe we start off with a not to exceed, and then we look at where those numbers are going to be, and then we can come back if we true those numbers up a little bit. But I don't want to blanket say, yeah, let's just spend whatever, you know, we need to come back and have an idea of what those numbers are going to be.
Absolutely, and currently, the whole entire budget is very fluid, Jamie, as long as Glenn and Kevin and Rick have been keeping you in the loop. The whole budget is very fluid. We know we need to do something to get off the ground, but we don't know what that is. Luckily, and because of the way it is structured, you do have representation times two on that board to help with that. So it is a blank check, but there is some checks and balances in that system that doesn't allow for that.
The bond spending plan that this council approved includes $250,000 for architecture fees. The architecture fee is higher than that for the entire project. But Jamie, since we've already approved that, is that an okay number to use out of, quote, "already appropriated funds"? Because I think the conversation, and this is something we kind of stumbled on 20 minutes ago, was that we need for DLZ to get started, but how do we put the bulk of that design fee into the BOT contract? So there's already been $250,000 set aside. And I guess so blank check isn't maybe accurate, but up to that, which has already been approved. Is that reasonable?
Yes, yeah, but I'd like to know what I'm getting for that, you know what I mean? So at what point in time then do we come back and say, well, we've got 5% done for that?
Jamie, I'm going to have Stephen Kromkowski from DLZ come up, and hopefully he can shed some light on that for you.
Okay.
Good evening, Stephen Kromkowski from DLZ Indiana LLC. So in terms of the expenditures, we're willing to work with the city and the dollar amounts, and we will define the specific scope of work for the dollar amount. So if you had identified, you know, $50,000, we're going to identify that scope. So I know you have that total dollar amount that you have in there, but you also are conscious of not spending all that early. And so we're willing to work with everyone. I mean, this is a great project, I appreciate the opportunity that we were selected on it. So we sort of broke it out, we have to first do some programming and concept designs, and then also working with your representative as well as with Greg and the bot and the overall financing. So we have to start getting the project in terms of, early on in the project, it's really square foot and project development. We know there's a potential site in terms of how much of that site actually gets developed. So there is quite a bit that is fluid right now. But the way the design process works, everything is very incremental. So we move to a certain level, to a certain stage, programming concept, we get a cost estimate, and then there's kind of a stop point that you can figure out, do we need to bring the project lower? Do we need to, you know, where are we at with the financial aspect overall? And then we adjust it accordingly. What we don't want to do, and we would never recommend, is you just go full bore, design the whole thing, and then realize, oh, it's, you had extra money. the whole thing, and then realize, oh, it's, you had extra money you could have spent, or you don't have enough to do that, and then you're backtracking and redoing everything all over again. That doesn't make any sense from your standpoint, it doesn't make any sense from our standpoint, so it's very linear progression, and we can provide those solid numbers, but, you know, the, in general, we had put some preliminary numbers together for the project, but we also realized the consciousness of how much money needed to be expended upfront. So, you know, I I would recommend that we have that meeting with all the players involved and then sort of define what that scope is, but I would fully, that two-fifty is going to get you quite a ways into past, well past the schematic design. So I'm not sure you would necessarily need to do that from our standpoint, I don't know what your, the project representative or anyone else that would, you have expenditures within there, but I would think that would be more than enough to get this project moving forward without going too far down the road that you may have to go back and and revisit some aspects of it, so. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry, I kind of was long-winded with that.
That helps, that helps a lot. Thank you.
So according to our...